I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Well, good evening and welcome to the city council meeting, August 5th, 2024. With that, if we could have a roll call, please.
Luther.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland.
Yeah.
Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Summerfeld.
Here.
Great. We don't have any special recognitions this evening, so we can move right on to the approval of minutes. If somebody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting and do so at this time, Rylan, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, Chad.
Like the second Rylan's motion?
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. No public hearings this evening. Uh, we can move on into public comments. Public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less at the podium. Please give us your name and address and do push the microphone button on in order to speak. So at this time, we'll open up the public comments. Uh, one note is under public comments, that is only agenda items for the evening. So if you have any other items that you'd like to bring up, um, or talk to us about, please see, uh, my, either myself or Dave or Eric, one of the senior staff members, and we can, uh, work on agenda items for the future. So that being said, if you'd like to, uh, come up and speak in public comments, now is your opportunity to do so. Public comments is open.
Hello, everyone. Becca Schoenborn, 27, 21 Nelson Drive. Um, I am here representing downtown Menominee. We have Music on Main on the agenda again. Uh, we keep switching this one every month. So, with attendance growing, we have been able to secure, um, the use of an outdoor stage as well as some really awesome rates for some hometown bands, um, that now travel the country touring, but we're excited that they're giving us a good deal to come play downtown. So we'd also like to add a beer tent. Our closed street. Um, we're working with bills distributing on that. And just some context, uh, my board president, Mike Stewart, one of the co-owners of Silver Dollar, he'll be doing wristbanding for that event. And we have, I believe, six volunteers, um, scheduled to work throughout that event at the beer tent and, um, just crowd control, that kind of stuff. So happy to answer any other questions that you have. And Jeremiah, my, um, co-planner of this event is here as well. So I'll let him speak if he has anything to say as well. Thank you all.
Thanks, Becca.
Hello, Jeremiah Jardine, 616 Third Street East, um, Menominee, Wisconsin. Um, on the downtown board with Becca, uh, here to represent the Music on Main, um, summer concert series that we have and happy to answer any questions as they come up on that agenda item.
Okay. Well, um, what's the, uh, date of this event?
August 9th, this Friday.
Oh, it's coming up fast. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Jeremiah. Thank you, Becca.
Thank you.
And public comment is, is open. If anybody else would like to speak, please come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Justin U. Paddle, 615 24th Street North. Um, I'm here on behalf of UW Stout. I'm the Senior Facilities Officer at UW Stout. Here to talk about, uh, agendas, item 6A. Would be happy to answer any questions you have when that, uh, agenda item comes up. Quick, just a quick summary of it is, uh, we are planning for a renovation of Heritage Hall. It's one of our academic buildings on campus. And part of that building right now houses our Child and Family Studies Center. Um, that is, uh, young children for childcare facility that we need to find a new home for in the, during that renovation. And so uh, what we're looking for is consideration to use the, excuse me, um, a portion of the leisure service center to house us just in that time of that renovation. So, um, looking forward to that consideration. And, uh, again, if I, if you have any questions when that item comes up, be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you, Justin. Okay, public comments is open. Last call for public comments. Okay, we're going to close public comments and move on with the rest of our meeting. Under unfinished business, 5A, proposed ordinance 2024-11, an ordinance repealing and recreating Title VI, Chapter 1, Section 12, all terrain and utility terrain vehicle usage. I know we've, uh, made some modifications and changes, uh, to the, uh, UTV ordinance. Um, but I think it outlines, uh, everything pretty, um, pretty well. Uh, and I think I'll turn it over to Dave and my phone's cracking.
Yeah.
Think I'll turn it over to Dave.
Yeah, I believe this is the fifth time this item has been on your agenda for, um, some, uh, form of consideration. Um, what's before you tonight is, uh, consideration of, uh, of adoption of the ordinance as, uh, currently presented. Um, we did make one change, uh, at the last meeting, which was to change the effective date from September 1 to October 1 to give us a little more time to get all the signs ordered and installed. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, but as of, uh, what staff would, would recommend, if you agree with the, with the changes, is a, a motion to adopt the ordinance, uh, 2024-11 to repeal and recreate Title VI, Chapter 1, Section 12, all terrain and, and utility terrain vehicle usage with an effective date of October 1, 2024.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Schofield. I'm actually, um, you know, sometimes I get a lot of complaints about certain things. Sometimes I get a lot of compliments. Um, I think I'm getting a lot of people that are fired up and excited about the possibility of being able to drive down to the lake or take their UTV, uh, short distance to the ballgames, um, or go downtown and, and, uh, you know, for whatever reason. So I think that being progressive, Menominee is a progressive city, and I think this falls in line with being progressive. I know we've talked to the police chief, the fire chief, um, of course, Eric Atkinson and Dave Schofield have dug into this pretty, pretty, um, pretty well. And I think, uh, the council has a pretty good understanding of the rules. Uh, so I think at this time then I am in support of this UTV, uh, ordinance. Uh, and I'm going to put it to the test to see how it goes tonight. So with that, um, do we need to add anything, Eric, at all, or?
No, I don't think so, other than just, uh, if you do approve of this action following the motion that was outlined by Mr. Schofield, would then allow us to be able to move forward with, um, implementing this ordinance.
Okay, so we're going to put it right to the test right away. If anybody would like to make a motion to support this ordinance, Chad, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 2024-11 repeal and recreate Title VI, Chapter 1, Section 12, all terrain and utility terrain vehicle usage with an effective date of October 1st, 2024.
Hey, good motion. Randy?
I'll second Chad's motion.
Hey, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on this? Laura?
Uh, we had talked about a, a 12-month, like, check-in. Is that something that goes into the ordinance or? I, okay, I didn't see.
It's, Laura, it's not in there. We're just planning, um, administratively, Eric and David will have it on their calendar. We'll just bring it back, um, for one year after to, to look back, see if we need any changes or recommendations on it.
Okay.
Great.
A second comment, um, as many of you know, I'm a physics professor and as a scientist, I like data. So I went out and I talked to the Wisconsin, um, ATV Association and, um, they gave me some data on economic impact, which is significant for general ATV, UTV usage. Um, I also went and looked at the Consumer Product Safety Commission. I got, yeah, I forgot that, right? And, um, the US Consumer Product Safety Commission actually does not s- suggest, um, ATVs on roads citing similar to, um, what the two organizations that we had in the agenda, their, their letters, uh, that these things are not made for roads. They are made for, for off-road usage. Um, and if people are interested, I can, I can get some, give you more information about what I, I found, but that's, that's the gist of it.
See, Laura, for clarification for if this ordinance does pass, would you like us to review this in August of next year or in October after it's been in full effect for a full year?
October.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. I'll mark my calendar.
Okay, any other discussion, Rylan?
Um, along lines of, uh, Laura's concern, um, does the police department have the capabilities to separate out, you know, complaint and accident statistics from different vehicles like ATVs and UTVs from the rest of the traffic complaints and accidents?
We have Chief Hollister here in the audience and also Commander King. If they want to come on up and speak, they should be able to speak to their capabilities in managing those records and statistics.
Thank you, Eric. Chief?
Yep, they, they will be able to do that. They just, uh, code it under ordinance violations.
We'll be able to.
So in a year when we review this, we'll have that
Yep.
information available as to how many tickets, accidents, complaints?
You know, it'll go from verbal warnings to tickets to whatever the, the violations are and we can move forward with that.
Okay. Um, and I believe you'd said in the past that like the noise issues with would be treated as a?
Well, the exhibition driving complaint, yes. If they're, if they're doing brake stands or wrapping the pipes and so forth, it'd be under exhibition driving. We just had to clarify the ordinance to match it with, uh, motor vehicle laws.
Okay. Um, and say you pull somebody over or, and I know I have had motorcycles and such in the past that clearly on the, on the muffler says, you know, not for road use, that would be cause for a ticket right there or?
Well, it's called discretion. We, we would not going to just issue somebody a ticket. We're going to work with people and a lot of times we do numerous traffic stops, so we'll issue a warning and so forth and move for compliance issues that way. So it just depends on, it's a discretion area.
Okay. Thanks.
If I can add to on what the chief said about the exhibition driving, if the, if this ordinance passes, we're going to be bringing back two different ordinances. Um, one for the forfeiture portion, uh, in our current ordinance, uh, it is located there. So we would take it out of the general book of ordinances. And then the exhibition driving, we will add ATV and UTV use as, um, the ticket on that, but we're waiting for this to go forward first. And then, um, after speaking with, uh, Allison Moore is the prosecutor, we're going to do a couple of changes on the other ordinances, but waiting for this action tonight.
Thank you, Ben. Yes, Matt.
Uh, do we have any idea how much continuous traffic that we're going to have with ATVs and UTVs in town? Or do we expect that the drivers are going to just leave from home, go to the gas station, then head out into the country for the most part?
Well, I don't know. I think it's, I've gotten both, uh, like the folks up that live down around Wacondo would love to just be able to UTV over to the, the games. Um, I don't think it's going to be as serious of an impact as we might foresee. I think it's going to be pretty calm. Uh, I think that a lot of people are going to appreciate the fact that they can even get on the roads. Uh, I've talked to the county, the people that live out in the county. They haven't had an issue and it seems to be just real smooth. So I, I thinking that Menominee, I think these people are going to appreciate it to the point where they're not going to roughhouse it and take advantage of it. And a lot of these machines now are that they've got a price tag on them. Uh, so it's just not your everyday individual that can go out and get a machine and jump on it, although I think the mayor should have one here at the mayor's office just in case. I gotta, you know, run around, but, um, but there's a lot of, a lot of positives. I know there are some negatives to it. But I think the positives, we have to look at the review process and we handle those negatives a year from now if they, if they creep up. So with that being said, um, anybody else for a last minute discussion, we'll take it to a vote. Mary?
I would just like to ask some of the senior members in the, well, sorry, you're not senior. Um, some of the moms and dads types that are part of this, driving this, um, this, um, motion. Do you get a sense, are you getting any pushback from the younger kids as far as having to wear a helmet or putting lights or extra things on their, their ATVs, UTVs like we've asked them to do or like they're, they're going to have to do? Do you get, anybody get a sense of that?
I know, I know. We, we're okay, we're, we're, we're above the rules here a little bit, um, but no back and forth if we can with the audience. If you want to waive the rules, you can ask questions, but otherwise keep it to staff if possible, please.
But I can give you my input on what I've heard from the public, uh, generally speaking, um, most UTVs are coming, they come prepped already with blinkers and signals. And that seems to be the rage, uh, whereas the ATVs not so much anymore. And the ATVs, you know, where you jump on and saddle the machine. Um, it, somebody was telling me for like $29, $30 or whatever, they can get a turn signal kit, you know, order it up and put it on themselves. So I don't think it's going to be a big deal. Um, having a driver's license, um, having to be at least 18 years old, um, or, um, have a helmet otherwise, uh, there's insurance. So there's a lot of things that maybe have taken place in this that maybe they're not doing out on the trails and maybe it'll help in some cases. Uh, maybe it'll make them aware that they need insurance or maybe they should be wearing a helmet or maybe they should be driving, you know, slower speeds. Um, you know, the speed limit's, uh, max out is, I think it's 35. Uh, other than that, uh, you know, the, the putts around them. And so I think it's going to be okay. I think this one, uh, I pretty much talked to anybody that's contacted me one-on-one, um, and I, I, I think we're going to be okay with this ordinance, um, and we're going to review it in a year. Let's try it, see where it goes and, and take it from there. So, um, I any other discussion items? Otherwise, we're going to take a vote, Rylan.
Um, could you just clear, uh, repeat for us the, uh, drinking and driving on these, is that similar as a car, exactly the same as rules as operating a car? Um, because like I've seen a handful of ATVs or UTVs in, you know, country bar parking lots and the idea of having those line Main Street and then uh, in higher traffic areas seems like that would be a potential issue.
Chief Hollister, I'll let you answer that one.
It is OWI enforceable at the O8 level and, uh, they can also get OWIs. Uh, how they figure them for vehicles versus ATVs are not the same, but they will still be counted as OWIs. And that it's, I, I get what you're seeing. You, you're, you're seeing that, uh, where the vehicles are parked downtown, but there's times that we see 10, 15 motorcycles that are parked downtown and it's, it's just, it's a concept we have to get used to, but, uh, it's something that we're going to pay attention to and, and if it's a growing pain, we'll deal with it. And that's what this ordinance for is, is, is in, in place for. We can get compliance issues.
You know, I think one of the nice parts about this ordinance and consideration that is if it does pass, we'll bring it back to the council with some data that we've collected over the year, both whether it's been offenses, traffic accidents, calls to service, or hopefully there are no incidents whatsoever, but either way, it'll be a good time for us to be able to review if you pass it here tonight and then make any kind of a changes at that time.
Okay, thank you, chief. Thank you, Eric. Okay, any last discussion? Otherwise, we're going to go to a roll call vote. Okay?
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
No.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to the next piece of business, number 6A. Proposed lease agreement with UW Stout for use of the Leisure Services Center. Discussion impossible action. Um, Eric, you want to bring us up to speed?
Yeah, I can tee this up a little bit. So UW Stout has approached us about, uh, renting our leisure services center. You heard from Justin U. Paddle during the opening comments or public comments portion of this meeting where they need to have some space due to some construction that's taking place. We have a potential three-year lease and we think that it's more than appropriate and it'll be a good fit for our leisure services center. Our senior center folks have also been talked with to see if that this would work for them. It works on their side of things. So thank you to Mitch Stye for working that out with that group. And one of the nice things I'll, I will bring up about this potential lease is that Stout is willing to make some improvements by adding some playground area too, which is sorely needed for that spot. So staff has reviewed it. We're in support of it. If, if you want to hear more from Stout, certainly we have them here in the audience. If you want us to spend the rules, David Schofield has also been part of the conversation and can provide some background too as well.
Yeah, uh, so the rooms that they're looking at leasing on exclusive basis are the, there's three rooms along the south, uh, edge of the building. Um, these two rooms are actually one combined room with kind of an accordion wall between them. Uh, there's Mitch's office and then there's one additional room. I believe that's used right now as the arts and crafts room by the seniors. Uh, they're going to be using another location for that, um, during the duration of this. Um, these are actually a different color. I apologize. It's very vague. Um, the other area that they would be using kind of, uh, occasionally is the gym space and the cafeteria space. That's not included in their, uh, exclusive area, but they would be using those occasionally during, throughout the day. Now they have a, a recess kind of period. They would be in the gym, um, if they needed, um, a number of tables for a meal or something like that, they could use our, um, cafeteria. So uh, those are, are not exclusive, but they would be occasionally used. The three rooms along the south, uh, edge of the building would be the exclusive rooms.
Well, I think it's a great partnership between University of Wisconsin Stout and the city of Menominee. And I think the more we can do working together as a partnership, the stronger that we are together as a unit. So, uh, that being said, any discussion items? Otherwise, we're going to keep on moving. Mary?
Um, David is, am I seeing it right? The, the one very corner, um, room, is that where we, um, vote? I think that's where Ward 8 and 9 vote. Is, is that going to be moved or interrupted or, or anything like that?
Yeah, we'll probably have to use the gym space or the cafeteria space for that, for the voting for these, um. And this, this will not start until July 1st of next year. Um, so this won't, this will not be impacted by this fall's general election.
Good point. Thank you. Anything else? Right?
Um, I assume that there's going to have to be some minor modifications to the space just to make it, you know? I'm not sure if, as little as, you know, hanging stuff up, stuff up on the wall or whatnot, but wear and tear and, and so on, does, who's paying for that? Or who's responsible for bringing it back to?
David, do you want to cover the building adjustments that we need to make?
Yeah, there's some minor improvements. I believe the, the third room, uh, the furthest east room, I think there's some egress, uh, improvements that need to be made to that room. So that, because they, one of the reasons that this space appeals to them is it has direct access outside, uh, whereas some of the other spaces that they looked at did not. Um, and so there's some egress improvements and then they, they may very well hang up some poster board strips and that sort of thing. Uh, the lease that we had, that the, um, intent to lease that's in the packet is what we use here at this building. We will also have a formal lease with them that we still have to negotiate that would cover in detail some of those items.
Okay. Hey, oh, Gretchen?
I was just going to ask about security since when you have little children and you have pretty strict security, but it, once that's on the building, is that going to affect the other uses or will people have to get different kinds of access?
Um, right now we have physical keys for the entrance, entryways. Um, we will be upgrading to the same style lock that we have here with the electronic door fobs. Um, and we'll provide, uh, that, that just allows us to, um, add and, and delete users much easily, more easily than a physical key.
Okay. Uh, we have okay, um, Matthew?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of intent to lease with UW Stout for a portion of the Leisure Service Center as presented. Direct city staff to negotiate lease agreement with UW Stout and authorize the mayor to sign said lease agreements.
Very good. Good motion. Uh, Eric?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Um, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, nobody. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 6B. Award Fire Department Staffing Study to Public Administration Associates. Uh, Eric, I'm going to hand that off to you first.
Yeah, a handful of months ago, uh, the council had approved an ARPA expenditure, which included, uh, the fire department utilizing a staffing study to try to determine what kind of staffing needs that they have both currently and then more importantly in the future. And so recently the fire department issued out a request for proposals. A proposal review was done and then based upon that review, staff is recommending awarding that study to the Public Administration Associates. That should be familiar group. They're the ones that helped, uh, fill the position that I'm in as well as David Schofield's and have assisted us in the past. We do have the chief class here in the audience that can speak more to the RFP, what the purpose of the staffing study is, as well as reps from, I believe, uh, Public Administration Associates are here as well.
Yeah, chief?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we put out a staffing study request to the city a few years ago and with our funding, we were able to successfully issued RFP and we sent that to six different firms and we received four replies, which were graded by Mr. Schofield and I. And, uh, Public Administration Associates came out on top on that. What we're looking for is where we're sitting now, what, if anything, we can do operationally to maximize our staffing, but more importantly, what we're going to need in the next five, 10 and 15 years. So.
Well, it's great. Any questions for the chief? Um, does it, does it staff? Does it look at just the, um, staffing or does it also look equipment too?
We requested staffing at this point. Um, obviously if it is deemed that we're going to need staffing, that's going to have to go through a whole nother approach. Um, but with that, we are going to need facility increases or renovations, um, and that staffing will drive. So.
Okay.
One of the things to keep in mind and it's jumping just slightly ahead in our, our agenda, this could intertwine with the next agenda item too as well. So depending upon what the staffing study comes up with, if there is a need for increased staffing, yes, that could potentially, uh, require additional space, additional equipment, should the council decide to take action on that. If it is a case of additional space or equipment, that can also intertwine with what the police department is doing when on a space needs study. So all these are intertwined. And then the other, the other component to take into consideration, this is using ARPA funds to be able to expend it. So if you do decide to support this action, make sure that you please indicate that we're utilizing ARPA funds to expend it. So that way we can report that to the State Department of Administration.
Good. Okay. Any other discussion pieces? Otherwise, Mary?
Um, and somebody maybe already said this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, so as part of their, um, purview is to help us maybe suggest a place or find a place or, or grade what place they think we, you know, if we are going to build another station?
So our, our request was for staffing only. Mary, we didn't put anything in there for facilities simply because of the other, the other portion of this. So.
If Mary, if we get to the point where let's, let's say that that becomes an issue where we think that they're going to need more staff, we would then consider at that time adding a, a space need study for them as well to see whether or not they need an additional space or if it could be a combined space with one of our other departments to try to maximize the buildings that we currently have, or if we need to erect a new one.
You're welcome.
Good discussion and good, good comments. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. All right. Um, if anybody would like to support this with a motion, they can do so at this time. Laura?
I'd like to accept the proposal from Public Administration Associates of Whitewater, Wisconsin for consulting services to conduct a fire department staffing analysis at a total cost not to exceed $24,960 using ARPA funds.
Good job. Thank you. Good motion. Is there a second? Matthew?
I'll second Laura's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman. Sorry, started with you.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on down to 6C, award Police Department Space Need Study to BKV Group. Um, Eric, I'm going to hand that off to you first.
Sure. In similar fashion to the fire department, uh, request for proposal, the police department did a request for proposal on a space need study. So we currently rent space at the Judicial Center and we've done so for about 24 years. The police department feels that they are out of space for what their needs are in order for us to be able to determine what we need for the future, what we're at right at the moment, decided to utilize those ARPA funds or recommend spending ARPA funds to do a space need study. That was before you on a previous obligation agenda item. And then what happened was is so then they went forward with their request for proposal process, alert of the fire department. Through that request for proposal process, a review was done. BKV Group was the group that was selected to do the space needs study. Uh, there are representatives here from BKV Group to speak. Additionally, we have Chief Hollister and we have Commander King that can speak more eloquently to the request for proposal process and what they are looking to hopefully learn about their space and what this study can do for them.
Okay. Thanks, chief.
Yes, you're welcome.
Chief Hollister, if you want to step back up to the podium and tell us a little bit about what you're looking for.
29 seconds or less?
No, you've got, you got 20 minutes. You know, you've got plenty of time.
As, as we're looking at, uh, space needs assessment.
As, as we're looking at the space needs assessment there, uh, I got looking, uh, I thought, man, we've been out here probably 24 years. And I looked it up and it's actually been 26 years. So it's actually good timing to look at this, the space needs here uh, as we're feeling the crunch for space and, and the functionality as far as for the police layout. Generally, when you're, when you're, you're building those facilities and you're looking out 20, 25, 30 years, it's how much you want to put out there for money to make it stretch out that much longer. And so over the last two and a half decades, as the, uh, current facility that we're at, trends have changed and our building needs have changed for the police department. Uh, so it's, it's still a good building in certain ways, but there's a lot, a lot of ifs and ands and challenges there. Some of the challenges. Uh, our adequate, adequate office space is lacking. The police department has had two interview rooms when we first started out back in 1998. And, uh, through rededicating and repurposing rooms to make, uh, uh, more space needs more efficient. We took, uh, the records bureau, went into one of the interview rooms and, uh, the computer servers, as we got technology, went into the other interview room. So that washed out two interview rooms. So now we need to find, uh, an interview room. So we took the patrol, uh, work, workroom, moved their offices out of there and moved them into the briefing room and we made an interview room out of the patrol workroom. So location wise where the, the interview room is now is not real conducive for, uh, when you start doing sensitive interviews and noise quality control stuff. Again, that goes back to the functionality, the layout part of the police department. So as we moved the workstations for patrol, that went into the briefing room. So now the briefing room has got the patrol officers also working in there and you got briefings in there. And we also utilize that for training purposes. So it's a three-phase room and that's small. So as, as we move across the hallways, you got the arms room where we keep our, our arms and our, uh, less lethal component firearms and ammunition, stuff like that. That room started filling up with, as, uh, technology comes in, you've got cameras, radios, uh, body warm cameras and, and that room is filling up with that kind of stuff. So we moved the, the rifles and, and those locker equipments out of that room and put them back in our break room area. And then we brought in other like, uh, training equipment, stuff like that to store in this room. So as we're moving things around through the police department, it's kind of a, whatever is going to fit our needs at the time. And so, uh, 2023, I told you all about a wellness room we'd implemented at the police department. To get that wellness room in place, which, which I, I think was, was a huge need and it was a, a want that I wanted for the people. We had to take all of our records out of a records room. We put that in the arms room. So now that arms room is, is, it's, it's tight in there. And so that's got probably thousands of pages of reports, uh, digital recordings in there. And so that room is, is packed. So as we, uh, have our staffing for our youth service officers, they need to take our last two offices down our last hallway. And, uh, so everything is really full right now as we look at things. And then as we look at other things that we've done, if you go back in our break room, we've got our break room, you've got the gun cleaning area. You've got storage shelving for officers, their duty bags. You've got the ammo, you've got the rifle guns back there. It's, everything's back in that area. And, and there is a common area in this building for breaks. But there's, it's, it's not a secure location. It's open to anybody in that judicial center. So it is part of law enforcement. Sometimes when you come in for your 15, 20, 30 minute break, you need to be able to, uh, let your druthers down for 30 minutes and decompress in a good environment. So it doesn't get used by us, but it can be used by a lot of other people within the facility. So as, as we also look at other needs there, we're looking, okay, so uh, one of the trends was, was forensic computer, uh, area that we had to have a room for that. And, and that's, that's the big trend and, and, and that's been a, a huge, uh, advantage for us is having that, that forensic computer lab in-house. We can process stuff timely manner. We're not waiting for, uh, downloads or, or self-owned dumps to come back for months or years from the crime lab because we can do that. We have the personnel to. In order to get that room, which has to be with evidence compliance for security and, and chain of custody issues, we had to make a, a separate room for that one in, in access to certain people. And so we took a chunk of the computer room where the servers were and cut that off and made a little room out of that. And so we've got, uh, our forensic computer examers will work out of there and that's very, very small. And so they'll be doing several cases for us, for other agencies and so forth. And that can be very cumbersome in that, in that area. And then you look at, uh, just our general investigators. Uh, I can go in our general investigator's office and you've got, uh, the drone is sitting in, in by the one investigator desk and it's, it's a big thing. If I take it, the box in there and to come to national night out tomorrow night, you'll see the drone flying. We got a big surprise with that. So anyway, so you got the batteries for it and you've got PPE equipment in there. You've got crime scene equipment in there. So you're not maximizing that office for that investigator to, to do interviews. Everything stacked up in and around. We're making it work and, and, and we're not complaining about that, but it's called space efficiency as, as we grow and, and tech, technology grows. So that's kind of where we're at for the space needs and stuff like that. Uh, it, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, uh, this is actually very good timing. So, and, and I like hearing that MFD is going to do a staff study that, that could come out to an advantage for, for cost savings for the city in a number of ways. I can tell you in a minute. But as, as far as for my vision, this is, this is according to Rick. 20 minutes, right? Just kidding. So as we're looking at, at space needs, you know, and, and you start intertwining, i- if it's, the roadmap says, yes, we need to do go bigger, we need to renovate, we need to build something, we need to combine with the fire department. What great timing. We can have great, uh, cost savings by adding an ambulance bay at the right location at the police department, putting, uh, sleeping quarters and a kitchen on there for not just the fire department to use, but we can use that access to same areas there. With us being in the 12-hour shifts now, we're seeing that where you're going to want to see people be able to have access to, to heating up dinners and more of a, a dinner friendly environment. So is that, that, so you got, uh, savings there, but then what's really, really kind of cool about that is, is, is you look at that department, their emergency department and, and they, they train year round like we do. You have to train. It, it's, it's, uh, mitigated risk, high-risk, uh, stuff. So it's, if you want to mitigate your, your high-risk stuff, you train all the time and you're always sending your people out for training. Training is very expensive. Uh, we have a big training budget and we never have enough, uh, money for there. By the time you start sending people out, whether it's out of state, in-state lodging, uh, travel expenses, food expenses, time off, uh, you've got overtime for replacement backfill shifts. If you can have a trained facility within your police department and you put that in there and you say, okay, now I can bring vendors in here and I can also now I can sell out to other agencies to pay for some of this stuff. So now I'm, I'm using that, that, that training room, not just for myself, but then the fire department can do the same thing. If you look at Madison PD, uh, they're, they've been doing this for quite a few years and they're successful. They bring in training in from all of the United States. It's pretty cool. And, and departments from all of Wisconsin go down there, but it's, it's just a training facility. We're not as big as Madison, but it's the same concept. We can do the same thing. So I'm really excited about that. That would be a cool thing for, uh, a new department. Also, you know, i- if you're going to do something like that, y- you have the opportunity to, to change aesthetics to what's the community face? Are we just going to put up a brick mortar building? Are we going to put something on there with the face of the community? You know, uh, what, what, what's good for the community? How do we want to sell ourselves? Where are we at today? If it goes in a neighborhood, do, do we make it look like a, just some big old statue? No, we're going to make it look like a neighborhood piece, like a residence, like a house. If we're going to put it in the business district, we're going to make it look like a, a, a business. You want it to be part of the community. And, and with that, you, you look at it being part of the community, you say, okay, we, we are always trying to do community engagement. Uh, as I look at community engagement, uh, we, we, we've been doing some really good things there in the last 10 years. And, uh, as, as we look at some of our programs, you know, whether it's programs for resources, whether it's Project Hope or Youth Response Team, uh, or you look at the engagement piece for public relations who are messaging through social media. I just talked to Caitlin today. We've got 16,000 followers as of last month. And we had 30,000 views. So that, that's just awesome. That's just for our, our social media. So they're following us out there. And then if you, if you look at this here, uh, what else have I got here? You know, we're doing the citizens academy, we're doing the, uh, the junior law enforcement program and the VIP programs, internships with our local universities. We're bringing students in and doing internships with these people. That also ties into recruitment retention things that we're doing. And doing coffee with the cop, national night out is tomorrow night. Uh, uh, we're looking at, uh, we just did, uh, back to school backpacks with, with, with kids. We had 13 kids that got backpacks full of, of school and clothing. Now, we, we teamed up with Walmart. They're, they're just a great resource for us. And as we've got the, the other things like, uh, fishing, uh, fishing, bobbing, uh, we went ice fishing with the cops this year and it was called, uh, bobbing with the police officers. So that was kind of a fun event. And we, we're going to keep on doing these kind of, uh, community events, but where we need to keep, we need to look at, you just can't be doing the same thing all the time. You have to dig deeper. And, and so you say, how does that tie into a new, new facility? Well, maybe we need to look at, if you build a new police department or you renovate a place, you bring your fire department in there, you, you've added your training spaces where you can, you can save stuff there, but I'll put a community center in there where there's a meeting area where your nonprofits can come in there or your 4H kids can have meetings. And so now they're coming to the police department to have these meetings. Uh, as officers are coming and going from calls, they can walk through that lobby area through there and you can have interaction also with these kids or these parents or you could have a basketball hoop outside the police department. You could have a little park-like setting, you know, if they're shooting some buckets out there after school. It, it doesn't take much to get an officer to go shoot some buckets. It, it's just that interaction, you guys got to keep looking for ways to interact with the community. So that's what we're looking for the billing part. So that's the silver lining to it and then that's what I see. With that being said,
No.
I'm going to bring Commander King up here.
Well, okay, absolutely. But I've got a couple of things for you.
Yes.
Um, when you put your basketball hoop in, uh, a foosball table and a pickleball court.
I love it. I love it. What, what an action for, for to get out in the community and, and just further the things we are doing, is what I'm trying to say. And, and keep on working that way.
Well, there's a lot going on out there, I know. And Mike, I want to bring it back to the space needs of, I know the sheriff's department must be tight also then. And if we were to separate, I don't know how much square footage you have out there, uh, chief. But if you were to be able to be into another building or a space needs, uh, appropriate sized building, does that free up the, the sheriff's department, the county to have what their space needs might be in the future?
Yes, that's a very good question. And, and, and it's something that they're already lacking for space. And as you see, I was in here last, that's a couple of months ago, looking for a locker for a budget transfer for locker storage. The sheriff's department and the police department, actually, uh, we, we went joint for buying lockers. We needed six more lockers for the men's locker room. That's another area that's crunch. We didn't have space for. They bought three lockers. We bought three lockers because things just keep getting, uh, smaller and smaller. You know, we, we have a joint training room currently with the sheriff's department, but that's used with the sheriff's department, communication center, emergency government. And just for logistical things, trying to get in there sometimes, like I need to have interviews for, for police officers. All of a sudden I don't have that. Someone else got it. I want to do training. Yeah, it's not big. I can just, it's just, there's so many things that you look at. So it would, it'd be incredibly helpful for them also. Yes. And then if you look at our, our, we have two, uh, garage stalls. So you just, you just started, uh, spinning my, my P up here. Uh, so we have two garage stalls and if you look at the fire department, all of their equipment is in, is inside. And it's ready to go. It's, there's equipment that it's, it's temperature controlled. Your stuff's ready to go. You can respond to scenes. And everything's climate controlled. So the police department, I've, I've handled the fleet maintenance for I don't know how many years and, and we're replacing emergency lights and, and, and equipment on the outside of the cars. When you leave them outside 24/7 in our climate where it's, it's, it's extremely cold, extremely hot, stuff wears out. So you got more wear and tear, whereas if you could have these vehicles inside and you could respond from, from a, a controlled climate, you're also going to be, be, uh, having equipment not taken out of the squad so much. Example like our Narcan that we use, uh, for the, under Project Hope or overdoses. That has to be controlled, uh, by a certain temperature. You can't let it getting frozen out there. Or another thing is, uh, like, uh, fingerprint tape. Try peeling that off when it's 32 below and to lift latent fingerprints at a crime scene. So there's just, that's just so many things to think about when, when you, and, and if you go to the sheriff's department, those squads can drive inside. We just, we just didn't plan that way. So anyways, with, uh,
Yep.
The RFP selection, uh, Commander King has been assigned as the project manager. He's, uh, one of the commanders for the police department. If you don't know him, he, he does the operations, the day-to-day operations. And I'm super fortunate to have him on the command staff. So Chris, if you want to explain the process.
Great. Thanks, chief. Commander King? Good, uh, good evening, sir.
Thank you, chief, and good eve- good evening to everybody. Um, when the chief, uh, first assigned this to me, I thought, oh boy, what am I getting myself into? Um, and this is the first stage of it. So when it came to um, getting an RFP out there, we sent it to 11 different, uh, architects and that were well-known in the police, uh, or, or fire, uh, setting. So I, I just went online and I looked at who was, who was doing this kind of work and, um, we ran into some local ones and then some national ones too. So we sent it out to 11 architect firms. And then we had three or four more after we sent the RFP out, um, that reached out to us and wanted and wanted that RFP to propose or to, to maybe submit a bid for it. In the end, we got three responses. Um, Wald Architects, uh, out of the cities, FGMA, FGM Architects, uh, out of Milwaukee and then BKV group, um, out of Minneapolis. Um, and in the end it was myself, uh, the city administrator Atkinson, uh, public works director, Dave, David Schofield and the chief, um, who sat down and scored their proposals. And we did that independently of each other in our scoring system. And at the end, uh, BKV group, uh, came out on top in our group. I will say part of doing some reference checks with, uh, these three groups. And it was pleasantly surprised through, not surprised, but pleasantly, uh, they came out pretty high in my reference checks. Um, the two agencies that I was able to make contact with spoke very, very highly of BKV group and that it was just a great fit, um, for their department. They gave them nothing but A-plus ratings. So um, with that, if you have any questions about, um, how we came to that selection process for the architect groups, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Well, commander, uh, thank you. First of all, thank you for being here and, uh, thank you for speaking tonight on this. And thank you for putting the extra work in and diligence to find, uh, the good representation to do something of this nature. So I'm pretty comfortable with it. I think the council probably is comfortable too at this point, but, um, uh, any questions for, uh, the commander or the chief? Otherwise, if anybody'd like to entertain a motion, we can do so at this time.
We do have somebody from BKV group too, if, if you wanted further.
Do we need any further information? I think it's pretty well spelt out. I appreciate them being here. Thank you for, for coming down. Unless you want to say something really, really important and we could waive the rules, but, um, chief?
I just want to mention again, this is an ARPA fund expenditure. So in your motion, if you would, please include the expenses will come from ARPA funds. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Sure. So if anybody'd like to make a motion, Chad?
Um, even though Chief Hollister already has his general contractor out for the new police station, I'd like to accept the proposal of BKV group for consulting services to conduct a police department space needs at a total cost not to exceed $12,450 with ARPA funds.
Good motion, Ben. Thank you. Ryland?
I'll second Chad's motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, going on to, uh, six. Let's see, six C, six D. These, my numbers are messed up. Six D, uh, Ward Bungie, no, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Sixty, I'm sorry. Award Bungie Drive Resurfacing Project. Uh, David Schofield, bring us up to speed, please.
Yeah, this is the project that was at your last agenda or on the last meeting that we rejected the bids. Uh, Cedar Corporation assisted us with, uh, rebidding the project with a uh, inch and a half mill and overly rather than a total, uh, pavement replacement. Um, we do have, uh, $75,000 in our budget. And then we have, uh, the remaining, uh, 40,000 available and undesignated funds in our, what's called Fund 33. Um, so I'll let Kevin, um, O'Yum, uh, speak to the bids.
All right. Thank you, Dave. So yes, as last Thursday, we opened up the bids at, um, 10, 10, at 10 in the morning and we ended up with two bidders as part of the project. And there's a big tabulation that was included as part of the council packet. Um, the two bidders that we received are from Monarch Paving. And then send blacktop out of Chippewa Falls. Um, down at the bottom is where the numbers came out. Uh, Monarch Paving was 105,698.30 and then sends followed with 110,000, 143,005 cents. So overall, pretty close. Um, between the two contractors. Uh, before we actually sent it out to bids, we always do an engineer's estimate. And our number was, uh, 98,310 dollars. So just slightly above what we thought the project would come in. Um, us, Cedar Corporation has worked with Monarch Paving on a, on a number of projects. And we found them to be a very reputable contractor. So with that, uh, we're recommending that the city award the project to Monarch Paving contingent upon receipt of proof of bonding and insurance from the contractor.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, David Schofield, back to you. Um, so can you just say, um, you know, what the process is? We're going to mill it off and put down an inch and a half of blacktop. Is that?
Yeah. So the existing pavement is, uh, probably three inches. Yeah. So the existing pavement is probably three inches thick. We're going to mill off the top half of it. So there's going to be a large mill that'll run through there. It's going to be a giant, if you've seen a woodworking mill, it's a much larger version of it. And then we'll do some minor adjustments on castings and then put it back down an inch and a half of new asphalt. The existing roadway, the southbound lanes, so the, and the west side of the road is severely impacted. I think some of the things that we have out there going on is our, we've done chip seal a number of occasions. And that chip seal surface is kind of breaking off and water sits in those, in those gaps. So we're hopeful that this is, this is a good use of our funds here and try to extend rather than doing a a full reconstruct each time a road gets to this point. Curbs are in good shape. The utilities are in good shape. This is, so we're thinking that this is kind of a good partial measure to try to extend the life of our roads.
Well, and I think, and Mr. Schofield and I had a conversation this afternoon on the square footage of that. I think this is a really good place on that method. And I think maybe other streets in the city, we should be considering this method along those lines as well. So just cue in that I think it's a positive that we do this method. And congratulations on Monarch if they get the, they get the bid tonight. So Ryland?
Yeah, just a quick question. Any idea what the current age of the pavement out there is? And what's the expected lifespan of the inch and a half?
I did the ASBILT on that back in 1999 or 2000. I can't remember what year it was. So it's 24 years old. That's probably getting to be the, in 24, 25 years is is probably about the lifetime of a pavement. You know, we like to get maybe 50 years out of utilities. But the pavement that sees a lot more rougher life is probably in this range. We do on our lower volume roads and we're doing, we're going to be doing a project here. Actually tomorrow or Wednesday, we do a lot of chip sealing on our lower volume roads. But Vongy gets enough traffic coming in on County Highway D and then continuing right to either River Heights or the high school that it just, it needs a little more TLC.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Schofield. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I think we can move this forward. Anybody like to make a motion to support this? We can do so at this time. All right, Mary? No.
I would make a motion to accept the 2025, oh, wait a minute. No, I'd make a motion to contract, award the contract to Monarch Paving for the Bongi Drive Resurfacing Project at a cost of $105,698.30.
Mary, can we add the contingency upon or contingent upon proof of bonding and insurance as well, please?
Contingent on proof of bonding and insurance.
Good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Matthew?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, down to 6E. Accept WISSTAT cap grant for 2025 clean sweep hazardous waste collection. Megan is here tonight and she's got 29 seconds to share with us her take on this grant. Or this collection event, I'm sorry. Great. We can stretch it out if you need to, Meg.
I'll do my best. I'll talk fast. So earlier this spring, the council authorized staff to apply for a 2025 clean sweep grant from DAT cap. This is a grant we've applied for annually for the last several years to hold a clean sweep hazardous waste collection. This grant is also in partnership with the township of Menominee and the township of Red Cedar to have a joint collection. And we did our first joint collection this past fall in 2023 that went really well. And we have a joint collection coming up on the September, September 26th. However, this grant is for the 2025 cycle. So it'll be held next, probably next fall, more than likely. And we've been holding September collections. So what we're looking for today is a motion to formally accept this grant. We received $15,693.71, which is an increase of just over $4,000. They had a little bit more money to dole out this year. So we'll happily take a little bit more. There is a 25% match that needs to come from local funds, but that can be cash or in kind. And I'm not concerned about getting that that amount. Last year, the event was probably around $24,000 to put together. So I think we'll be safe to get through the grant amount and the cash and in kind match. This will obviously be budgeted in our 2025 budget that will come forward for approval later this year by this body. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you, Megan. Two minutes. Really good. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Megan?
Yeah, Megan, what happens to this household hazardous waste? How does it get disposed of? And do we have any liability? Once we, you know, give us to the disposal company?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So with this grant, because we are a temporary collection, which for DAT cap is defined as four or less days being open. We have to use the state contractor who has done the vetting process and the RFP process. So that contractor is currently Veolia Environmental Services. So once they come on site, they take all of the materials. I sign a manifest at the end of the event showing what's on the truck and all that, and they maintain that chain of custody. And we receive the documents kind of, once they take it for incineration or for the final processing, we have that chain of custody that comes back to us. So that's all taken care of on their end.
It's a great program. I, I do have to give you credit for that. I mean, applying for the grants and putting the program together. Megan has done outstanding job with this. Ryland?
If I remember correctly, the town of Red Cedar and the town of Menominee, those two townships opt in to participate as well. Do they, I assume they pay a fee, what?
Yeah. So how, how we've been working it is we take the total expenses for the collection and boil that down, take the grant off. We have the number of participants that comes, let's say it's 100, you know, people, we divide that final expense by the number of participants. You get a per participant cost. And then we know through our surveys at the, at the gate, how many participants came from each municipality and then bill them appropriately. And that's how we kind of share the, the expense of the collection.
I know that there's been some requests to expand. How many townships participate? Have you, what's the, is there a holdup on that or what's the?
So we applied again with just the township of Menominee, township of Red Cedar, kind of the ones that touch us physically and geographically. And are ones that we have in our joint city town planning group that we've been kind of working cooperatively with. You will see in the list of awardees for DAT cap funds for this grant, the county also received money this year. So if they choose to accept the grant and move forward the collection, there would be an opportunity for other municipalities to join in that collection in 2025. And other municipalities have been holding their own clean sweep events, just not through the DAT cap clean sweep grant program. They've used a contractor out of Somerset or another contractor and had a smaller version of theirs that just didn't apply for the grant funding and the conditions that go with it.
Sure. So to kind of follow up on Megan's statement and then your question, Ryland. The county and the city are looking at doing a kind of a quasi partnership on this one where hopefully we can hold the events on back to back days. We can't do them on the same day just because we have to keep the hazardous waste separately so we can document for the grants. However, though, there's conversation that's taking place that if the county does accept their grant for this year and then we look and it's successful in 2026, we may want to just partner with the county outright and have them make the application. And then we could do that to do a potential expansion, but that's a little ways down the road yet. We need to work on those logistics and make sure the county is interested in, in doing that part.
Hey, great. Any other questions for Megan? Otherwise, if somebody'd like to support this with a motion, Lee, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the 2025 Clear Sweep Hazardous Waste Grant Award and the direct city staff to sign a grant agreement.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Is there a second to Lee's motion? Ryland, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I would second Lee's motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brings us down to 6F. There are special events permits. Downtown Menominee Music on Main, August 9th, 2024 amended. And the UW Stout Homecoming Parade on October 26th, 2026. I know Becca and Jeremy are here and I think we have stout representatives too. Yes. So if we need any additional information, we can certainly waive the rules and call them out. Otherwise, Chief.
Yeah. So we have two events that are in front of you here today with the downtown Menominee Music on Main, UW Stout Homecoming Parade. Both have been vetted by staff and both feel that they would fit in nicely and would be great events in additions to our community. And it come highly recommended.
So if anybody'd like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. If we have questions, we can certainly go that route as well. Yes, 2024 and oh, should be the homecoming parade on 26th of 2024.
Eric had a typo.
Yeah, good, correct.
2024. But 2026 would be great for homecoming too.
We just pass it for the next 10 years and we just got it covered. So, but anyways, if anybody'd like to make a motion, Ryland?
Do you need?
We can do both at once.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve both special event permits as presented. Contingent upon insurance. And anything else Ben says that they need? Go with that, Ryan.
It's a good motion.
All right. Whatever Ben wants, Ben gets. Okay, Cody?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And that means that we can get down to budget transfers. Jamie has one for the Treasury Department. I don't see her here tonight, but Eric?
Yeah. So in, in front of you here, let me grab it. I'll get to it. We have a small budget transfer request from our finance department. It's essentially transferring some money from our she had an account with a little bit of money that had chair money in there. They don't need the chair, but they would like to go to the conference that is sponsored by our new enterprise software system. So it's a users conference for our civic systems. They'll go there, they'll get an opportunity to network with other users as well as understanding well, more succinctly, what our current module, what our future modules will be. So we're on the very cusp of activating that system. So we're looking at going live in September. So this is a great timing for people in the finance department to go to the conference. So we're asking for your support in, in making that budget transfer from the chair account to schools and conferences.
Good. Thank you. If anybody'd like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Lee?
Make a motion to approve the budget transfer as presented.
Thank you. Gretchen?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brings us down to the mayor's report. I had the opportunity to have individuals from the UW Stout English Communications Class. I think we had 13 students here and I spent about an hour and we toured this building. And Pam had sent out a notice to some of the other tenants. So we were able to go to workforce development and oh my gosh, almost, well, we just toured every floor. So whoever was available, we stopped and said hi to reform medicine and oh, the, gosh, I can't even think of everybody we went to, but we spent an hour. And what, what intrigued me the most, I think, about these students, well, they're from all over the world too. They're from the two of them were from Ukraine, Ukrainian students. There were one from India and Mexico and Indonesia, I think. But anyways, but what I thought was really cool was they all had a unified thought process of, you know, America's really doing well. We are so friendly. And I asked him, he says, you know, what do you think of America? And America is like thumbs up. Everybody gave a double thumbs up on America, the friendliness. What do you think about Menominee? Thumbs up. Menominee is way good. What do you think about UW Stout? Double thumbs up. Have you had a chance to really tour Menominee? Have you looked at, you know, the Mabel Tainer Theater and all these different places? And they're just having a really great time here. And we talked a little bit about, you know, their countries and some of the wars and the famines and the, the all the problems that, that, that happens in the world. And we really got it made here. You know, you talk to some of these people and you realize what's happening in their country and what's happening here. We got parking issues downtown. They got bombs dropping on their buildings, you know? So if you put it in perspective. So I really enjoyed that hour and come to find out, I called Larry Jess that next night to find out about a possible pancake dinner thing. And the two Ukrainian students he sponsors and they were in the background and they were saying hi to the mayor that they'd been in the day before to get a tour from. So it's a, it's a small world in a big way and it's nice to have those students here. So hats off to UW Stout and hats off to the English Communications Class. But that's, that's all I've got tonight. But I'm going to, I'm going to open it up the floor to communications. So anybody, if they've got, go ahead, Laura.
You and I were at the library on
Yes.
Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
150 years.
150 years at the public library. There was a nice little celebration and the county board chair presented proclamations saying how cool it was. We've had 150 years of libraries in Dunn County.
Yeah. Who was the chair? I can't.
Some, some guy. Don't remember his name. Yeah, crazy bald headed guy. That'll work.
Well, Kelly did a great job here. You know, 150 years to have the library in Menominee, you know, that's, that's going strong. That's that's a chapter all in itself. So anything else, Gretchen?
There's a lot going on this week, but on Thursday, fitting right in there from five to seven at the raw deal is the poster presentations for the Lakes REU.
What, what time again is that?
It's five to 7:00 PM.
On Thursday?
Thursday, August 8th. And the poster session and talking about water resources and it's students that come from all over the country to do research. And there's a lot of variety, a lot of different departments represented itself that are doing work.
Good. Hey, thank you for that, Gretchen. Eric?
This is more of a question probably for Eric because, you know, Labor Day is coming up and it's on Monday. Do we generally meet on that day or do we generally move that to a Tuesday?
We generally move that. So we're going to look at the calendar and then present out some options. So we'll usually do it Tuesday instead of the following week, just to try to keep it in time. So if this, if this body wants to make that decision and hold that meeting on that Tuesday night, we can do that.
Very good. Just FYI for myself, I wouldn't make it Tuesday. I certainly could do Wednesday, but if you don't need me, then that's fine either way, but.
We always need you, Eric.
Thank you, Randy. It means a lot. Thank you very much. And I do know that.
Does that, does that Tuesday work for most everybody else? This would be the day after Labor Day in September? Anybody else have some conflicts that might be a problem for attendance? No?
I got seen with the barber shoppers that night, but maybe we can have rehearsals during our meeting. Yeah.
Why not here?
Yeah, we've done that before, haven't we?
You have.
All right. Matt? David?
We're starting chip sealing either tomorrow or Wednesday. It's kind of centered on the area south of the high school. And then we do have some areas up in North Menominee. So if you folks have your roller blades, you might want to put them away for a couple of days. But we'll, we'll try to get it done a day and a half, day or day and a half. So.
Okay, Kevin?
Saturday at 9:00 AM at the Dunn County Fairgrounds is the Menomen Meander. If you would like to take part in that or bring your kids. And we got a sponsorship for bike helmets for kids as well. And the fire department will be there. And
Where is this at? What?
Dunn County Fairgrounds.
When's the date?
What day is Saturday?
Oh, this Saturday?
Yes.
Wait, what?
August 10th.
At what time?
9:00 AM.
9 o'clock. Oh, that sounds cool. And, and so do you just bring your kids? I mean, how does the invite go out?
Yeah, you bring your bike yourself, your kids, and you go from the fairgrounds to Wakanda. You get a little snack, a drink. I think it's like apple juice. And then you continue around the rest of Lake Menomen, back to the fairgrounds.
Wow. Do they have to pre-register for this?
Nope. It's free and you can just show up.
Wow, Caitlin, good job. Okay, that's, that's, is that? Wow, Caitlin, good job. Okay, that's, that's, is that gonna be posted out there on the Menominee Facebook?
Already is.
All right, she's on it. Well, thank you, Caitlin. Appreciate that. Randy? Oh, no, Chad? Yeah, the, right here, it's the internet night, international, what, International Night Out with the band, the London Guard Band and the police and the fire and the kids and the, oh yeah, it'd be a ruckus. I mean, it'd be a good thing. So, yeah, Mary? Anything? Mary? No? Cody? Yeah.
Um, the other night, the county board passed an ordinance amendment legalizing accessory dwelling units with mother-in-law suites, granny flats. I would encourage folks to take a look at that and kind of pay attention to how that develops. Because there's kind of a, we have a bit of a housing issue in Dunn County, to put it lightly, and that could be a good way to help address it. It's in our comprehensive plan, but I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention.
Thank you, Cody. Chief, you were gonna touch on that.
Yeah, uh, to get to your point there, Cody, we are going to be looking at trying to budget for redo and look at our zoning ordinances. Would, would take an example, would take a good look at accessory dwelling units along with other options available to try to make housing more accessible for folks and also to encourage development here within the city. So I appreciate you bringing that up. And then the other thing is, so related to the National Night Out tomorrow, I'm just excited I'm not gonna be in a dunk tank. I've had enough of that. Thank you.
Well, sometimes I slip up and call him chief, but he's the chief administrator. So, you know, thanks, Eric.
You're welcome, Eric.
Also, a double B, I don't know if you've been out that way. Exit forty-five is open going across railroad tracks now. So you don't have to go all the way around to, to make the loop to, to have access. So yeah, oh, Kate?
Get out and vote on Tuesday, August thirteenth.
Wow, already?
Come to my office before then and vote in person and skip the lines.
Wow, how many times? Just, can you vote?
Often, early and often is what we say.
Right? Just one time.
One vote, one person.
One person. I knew it, I knew it. All right, well, thank you. We need to keep our meeting moving. So with that, we're gonna get right into the claims. So if anybody would like to pay the bills, we do have an amended list on our table this evening. So if you'd like to use that, Mary?
I would make a motion to pay the claims of the revised list.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to Mary's motion? Randy?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes, McCullough, sorry. Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Chief? Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Licenses was just a normal, normalist. Nothing, nothing major. Okay, so if anybody would like to make a motion to support that, we can do so at this time. Ryland?
I'll make a motion to approve the license list as presented.
Thank you. Good motion. Matthew?
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we need somebody to make the motion to adjourn. Cody, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would. I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, Matthew?
I'll second that.
Uh, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.